Good evening, councillors, ladies and gentlemen. I am councillor Emmett McKenna and I am the Chair of the Planning Applications Committee. I would like to welcome you to the Planning Applications Committee, which again is being held as an online meeting as permitted by the Coronavirus Act 2020. The public and the press can see and hear the meeting by following the link from our website. Agenda papers have been published on the council's website in accordance with our usual practice. To ensure that where a decision is required, it is clear what has been decided and by whom, members will be asked to vote individually on planning application, stating if they wish to vote for, against, or wish to abstain. To help those observing the proceedings to follow the meeting and understand how decisions have been reached, we will be presenting some information on slides as we proceed. Members and officers attending will be asked to introduce themselves. This is for the benefit of the public and also to ensure that all are in attendance as expected and that they can hear and speak to the meeting. To help me manage the meeting, members have been asked to make me aware if they wish to speak on an item in advance. This does not prevent additional contributors being made, but I ask all councillors to notify me when you wish to speak in the chat section of their screens and then wait to be called. This will avoid councillors talking over each other. When not speaking, will councillors put the microphones on mute? When called to speak, please unmute your microphone and pause for about three seconds to allow the slight time delay in connection. I'm aware that we're at the mercy of individuals broadband services and it's possible that loss of connection may happen. However, as long as we have five members still in the meeting, we remain quiet. For item eight relating to the application at Wensley Road, we have objectors and representatives of the applicant connected to the meeting by telephone. I will call on them to speak at the appropriate moment. In case of any problems with sound or connection, written statements from all parties have been circulated with the update pack to ensure that representations can be considered. I will now do a roll call of councillors. As I say your name, could you introduce yourselves to the meeting? I am councillor Emmett McKenna, Chair of the Planning Applications Committee, and I represent Whitley Ward. I will call on the other members of the committee alphabetically. Councillors, please, will you state your name and the ward you represent? Please speak slowly and clearly for the benefit of the record. Councillor Devine?
I'm Ricky Devine, Lead Member, councillor for Talhurst.
Thank you, councillor Devine. Councillor Lovelock?
I'm Joe Lovelock, I'm councillor for Norcot Ward.
Thank you, councillor Lovelock. Councillor McKeon?
Good evening, I'm Ruth McKeon, I'm councillor for Churchward.
Thank you, councillor McKeon. Councillor Page?
Good evening, councillor Tony Page, and I represent the town centre Abbey Ward.
Thank you, councillor Page. Councillor Robinson?
Good evening, Chair, good evening, everyone. Councillor Simon Robinson, representing Peppard Ward.
Thank you. Councillor Roland?
Good evening, Chair, Karen Roland from Abbey Ward, Abbey Ward councillor and also the Lead Member for Culture, Heritage and Recreation. Appearing audio only this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Sokala?
Thank you, Chair, I'm councillor I, Sokala here, I represent Caversham Ward and I'm vice chair of the Planning Applications Committee.
Thank you. Councillor Stamford Beale?
Good evening, Chair, good evening, everyone. I am Jane Stamford Beale and I represent Peppard Ward.
Thank you. Councillor Josh Williams?
Good evening, Chair, yes, Josh Williams, representing Park Ward.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Thank you, councillors. I would also like to introduce to you the officers who are in attendance tonight. Julie Williams is our acting planning manager. She is our senior planning adviser and is responsible for the work of the planning team. She will also advise me tonight on any matters relating to planning policy, guidance and practice. Case officer Jonathan Markwell is presenting the report on the Wensley Road application this evening. Darren Cook from Transport and Sarah Hansen, the Natural Environment Officer, are also in attendance to answer any queries on those issues. Wendy Addison is a planning solicitor in the council's legal department. She is here to advise me on planning and local government law. This is to ensure that when the committee makes a decision, it is both within its powers and legally signed. Simon Hill and Nikki Simpson are committee services officers. They are taking the minutes of the meeting and producing the live broadcast. With the introductions out of the way, let us now turn to the agenda. For voting on the information items of this meeting in part one of the agenda, I will ask, are we content to proceed? And pause for five seconds. I will take silence to mean that all members are agreed. Minutes of the last meeting, these are to be found at pages seven to 10 of the agenda pack. Members, can you confirm that the minutes are correct record of the meeting held on the 15th of July 2020? Thank you, that is agreed. Turning to declarations of interest, do any members have any declarations of interest which they wish to bring to the attention of committee? Thank you, councillors. Agenda item three is questions. There are no questions submitted to this meeting. Agenda item four, applications determined by officers using extended delegated powers. Can I ask the planning manager to introduce the report found at page 11?
Thank you, Chair. As explained, this report sets out the decisions taken on applications that have ever been called in by councillors and then agreed that we could deal with as delegated power by officers. And also it lists the true preservation orders that have been confirmed under that same extended delegation. So in your report, table one lists those applications for you and on table two, you've got two TPOs that have been confirmed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Page, you have previously indicated you wish to speak to this item.
Yes, Chair, I'll be brief in view of the heavy agenda tonight. I welcome the decision in respect of two Talhurst Road, which two applications referred to in the middle of page 13. This would normally have come to committee by virtue of the strength of local concern and opposition. And indeed, the website reflects that from local residents as well as the Reading Civic Society. And I would just emphasise that this very prominent listed building on Talhurst Road opposite the BP garage on the corner of Bellevue Road is a building of some significance. It is listed and was formerly a hotel. The proposal by the current owners to try and shoehorn an 18-bed HMO into this building is an absolute travesty and a disgrace. And they should be ashamed of themselves for having even wasted money on drawing up what one can barely dignify as plans for this building. It has been refused on a whole host of reasons. The internal space is deficient in terms of a number of the flats. There are noise and stacking deficiencies, again in violation of clear guidance in the council's policies. External space is deficient and the natural daylighting is almost absent from a number of the flats proposed in the very basement of this building, which were never designed. And these areas were never designed for residential of any sort as the little windows, which are basically for ventilation, clearly show. But nonetheless, for this applicant, it was a space put in a bedroom. Doesn't matter about the council standards, doesn't matter about the future occupants. Let's go for broke. Greed here being the overrun, overruling factor in this application. The impact on neighbours also from an 18-bed HMO would have been very substantial and far more serious than a hotel. The hotel operated very satisfactorily without any complaints and was well-run. An HMO, of course, would not have a hotel manager there and staff and would be prone to all the problems that we see with the worst-run HMOs in the borough. And the final point, Chair, is this is, of course, a listed building and the proposals put forward would have been no credit to this listed building and the very positive feature that it is in this area. So I commend the refusal from the officers. I fear that we will face an appeal, but if we do face an appeal, all I can say is bring it on. Thank you, Chair.
Your obvious passion is noted. Councillor Roland, you've indicated you wish to speak as well?
Yes, thank you. As an Abbey Ward councillor, I can only very soundly agree with councillor Page on that one. It is also a house within a conservation area and a conservation area at risk. And we also have to remember the conservation areas are heritage assets. And when you are living within a conservation area or you own property within a conservation area, you are a caretaker of that property and it is not for you just to do whatever you so desire. With that, I would like to move on to four Downshire Square, which I was also pleased to see refused. The same situation on many levels apply here. You must be mindful of the fact that we've got a conservation area here and the fact that the NPPF, the National Planning Policy Framework, sets out the fact that you are supposed to appreciate that significance, preserve and where possible, enhance. And I would just encourage the developer on this, who has now tried for a second time with this, to really seriously think about that charge in regards to anything that they would want to do within a conservation area. The current house lends a spacious character to the conservation area and that is one of the highlights that is noted within that conservation area. What they proposed is not doing that and therefore it is not enhancing and it is not preserving. So I would just urge caution and that was all I wanted to say on that, but thank you.
Thank you. I also endorse your comments and welcome the refusals for many comprehensive reasons, as noted. Do any further councillors wish to speak on this item? Thank you, then there noted. The next item relates to planning opinions which are provided for members' information at pages 15 to 18 of the agenda pack. Please, can I ask Julie Williams to introduce the item?
Thank you, Chair. This report shows that we have had three appeals lodged since your last meeting, but there have been no decisions received, certainly when we were compiling this report and none since. So you asked to note the appeals that we have had submitted and to note the report generally, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lovelock, you have indicated you wish to speak to this item?
Thank you, Chair, it's on page 17, the appeal against the decision, unanimous decision. People will remember on Thorpe House Colly as well, I'm disappointed to see this but not surprised. And local people are really upset at this ongoing issue here and in particular because the owners of the land have now chosen to remove a fence panel and are, well, I wouldn't like to accuse them of too much, but surprising how much dumping has suddenly appeared on the land. And I think it's all part of the tactic to try and wear local people down, but they're made of sterner stuff and letters are already winging their way to the inspectorate. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Lovelock. Do any further councillors wish to speak to this item? Then it is noted and we move to applications for prior approval, agenda item six.
Thank you, Chair. So this report is a summary version of your previous reports on prior approval applications. It gives you an update on the effect on fee income and affordable housing implications for us. And it also provides you with a simple number table showing you the number of applications we've had using the prior approval route. You're asked to note that report, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Page, you have indicated you wish to speak to this item?
Yes, Chair, I just wanted to underline the figures in paragraph 10.1. Nearly a million and a half of fee income lost and that's just the income for processing the applications and helps us as an authority. That loss, of course, has to be made up elsewhere and falls on the council taxpayer. In addition, all these changes that were brought in by Eric Pickles and seem to be further destined for more changes in a few months also deprive the council of essential contributions towards infrastructure, whether it be new school places, open space and leisure, essential transport, infrastructure, as well as affordable housing contributions. And you will recollect that each year we have an update and at the moment, we have approaching £7 million worth of contributions that should have been made under the previous arrangements, but we have lost as a result of these prior approval changes. And that could well be exacerbated if further changes are made, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Page. Do any further councillors wish to address this item? Then the item is noted. Where are we? Seven? Thank you. Thank you. If there are no further, the next item, next report is item seven at page 23. Changes to general permitted development order and useless class order. I call on the planning manager, Julie Williams.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, this is becoming a regular item at the moment. So this report updates you on the latest set of government reforms to the planning system and focuses on three major changes. The rearrangement of the present use class order to allow greater flexibility within use classes, more upwards extensions and the ability to demolish and reuse vacant properties for residential development without first receiving planning permission. They will be coming through the prior approval route. And as mentioned earlier by councillor Page, that's what he was referring to, that we've got more prior approvals coming in and we will need to look again at how we present that previous report to you because there could well be more categories of prior approvals that we need to show to you. So first of all, looking at the use class order. The purpose of the reform of the use class order simplifies the existing system of use classes or that's the intent. To use an example, a change of use between a retail shop and a restaurant, a bank or a building society or any other kind of office, whether it's formerly in use class A2 or class B1A, a doctors or a dentist surgery, a light industrial use or a creche, they will all now be within use class E. So that would enable an A1 use to change to one of those other uses I mentioned. Displayed, I think it's at item seven, slide one, hopefully you can see that. I've taken as an example, we recently looked at Christchurch Road shopping parade on a previous application. And so we could see that the previous use classes for that parade with a mixture of A1 and A2 and A3 uses and the A5 use there. And so from first of September, those use classes will change to either EA, EB, EC. The A5 will become a sui generis use, so that won't be able to change to anything else. Previously, an A5 use could have changed back to an A3 or an A2 or an A1 use, but there would be no permitted change from that. And same for, there's no A4 uses, no pub uses in Christchurch Road, but A4 uses also become sui generis, so there'd be no permitted change from that. But otherwise, you know, one of the shops could change to a creche or to an indoor sports, recreational, fitness facility. There's some discussion at the moment in the profession whether that does include a June, we assume it does, but there's some vague wording in this and we still need to test that once it gets into practice. So furthermore, the new use class order could be even wider than the use classes that it replaces. So that's why I was saying that it's quite a wide spread of alternative uses that could take place. So this could include, for example, a nail bar, a tattoo parlour, a body toning salon, a tanning studio. At the moment, these are sometimes known as sui generis uses, but we think, and again, we're waiting for a clearer definition, that these will now come into EA use or something like that. And there also seems to be several uses which could be argued for within a number of new categories and including, there's another new use class, class F, which is more community-based uses. And it's not clear whether A use could actually fall within both use classes if a shop, an EA shop also serves a community, it's like a retail unit on its own, for example, and it could be argued was serving a community use, that would also be a use class F. But again, we need a bit more clarification as to how this will work. So that's a very brief introduction to the new use class order. We are all trying to get up to speed with it. As I say, it comes in on the first of September and from that date, all those existing A1 uses, A2 uses, et cetera, will become these new uses. And officers have to be mindful of the fact that we have quite a few policies in our adopted local plan which refers to A2 uses, A3 uses, such as protecting retail parades. And so we need to, with our policy colleagues, look at how we interpret that in the future. Right, so then the next set of changes introduced in this report are further roof extensions. So now the prior approval regime will turn to roof extensions on dwellings to provide additional accommodation. So instead of just dormers, now a dwelling could go upwards, going straight up from the east to provide additional accommodation and living space. And so that would be a class to the household extensions part of the permitted development order. And then in the new class 20, I spoke about that last time, where we had extensions to existing block of flats, there will now be new classes added to that. So it's a range of different A uses for the type of building you're going on top of. And in addition, we've got prior approval class ZA, which will cover the demolition of vacant buildings to allow redevelopment to residential use. As you may gather, we are still trying to get our heads around the implications of all of this and also how it would affect our ability to defend our so recently adopted planning policies. So one approach that we are looking at is to serve Article Four directions. For example, where we may have concerns that our core employment areas could be under threat, then that's something we could be looking at to try to ensure that we still retain our core employment areas as defined in our adopted local plan. I suppose it's sort of a silver lining. I suppose it should be remembered that in practice, there are often other restrictions that may limit the ability of developers to benefit from these changes. So for building upwards, they would need to get building control approval. There may be covenants with other leaseholders involved. And also on the vacant use of buildings, there could be contamination to be considered as well. We are allowed to charge SIL on new dwellings created, so that may also come into play and could make some of these schemes unviable. So in summary, these are major and extensive reforms and if members have any concerns about or questions about them, then please get in touch with myself or Richard Etoff and we'll try to help you. So thank you, Chair. I'm open to any questions that you might have at the moment, but you know, I'll do my best, thank you.
Thank you. I will have a few general comments to make, mostly related to the uncertainty of your answers and the speed of the government's imposition of these changes, which seem incredibly rushed, unnecessary in the extreme, without the guidance provided that would be necessary to ensure that they're implemented properly with proper consideration while removing considerable ability of any council to control local development within their areas without any process to align it with their adopted local plans, which are a very extensive approval process within line of all government rules. The extensions upwards, which can be done without any regard to affordable housing. The ability to demolish any building within any area of Reading, as long as the tenant's been out for six months, which could decimate any of our core employment areas by putting inappropriate housing, which will then have an impact on any industrial use within the area and hours of noise and anything else and hours of operation, seem to be perverse is a good term. The usage classes, which seem on the face of it to create a lot of, yes, a lot of new letters just to mask the fact that they're effectively removing a lot of the control previously available to local authorities, is strange, overly complex and more difficult to interpret, particularly when a considerable body of case law exists and guidance for a previous system that, while it had some deficiencies, was operational, was well-understood by all and was able to be implemented appropriately. The change to power approval, which will then remove the fee incomes that all planning services use to be able to defend and ensure that appropriate development occurs within their area, is an important one. And while we can welcome some elements, mostly along the lines of, we were briefed that it may have been worse, bad is bad, even if it's not terrible. These are, they have some merits if they've been done in a proper phased and consulted approach with the guidance and phased in rather than being published and then to be adopted within weeks without any of the official, complicated, detailed guidance notes and the ability of planning officers to understand before the applicants will be able to activate them. And yes, and the impact on the loss of our SIL and affordable housing contributions on some elements is deeply unwelcome. And within 6.4 of the report, you're asked to support officers undertaking further analysis of options available in regards to the new right to demolish and redevelop for housing, particularly within our key employment zones. I'm sure, all councillors and members of this authority will be more than happy to endorse the support required if you were to so tell us. Anyway, slightly incredulous on some of these, mostly because of the lack of detail. And I will now call councillor Page, who's also indicated, thank you.
Yes, Chair, thank you for your remarks and Julie's. And there's a phrase in paragraph 6.5 where she says there may be confusion, which is a masterful understatement. There's still, the full implications of this still have to be worked through. But in the general point, I just wanted to add and pick up on the point about the Article Four directions, which for people not familiar with that jargon, is a direction that removes the permitted development right in certain fields and requires a planning application to be submitted. It doesn't necessarily prevent the development, but requires the full planning process to go ahead. And I think we as an authority need to be much more up- It doesn't necessarily prevent the development, but requires the full planning process to go ahead. And I think we as an authority need to be much more up for considering Article Fours in respect of our core employment areas, for example. We have just had approved, after years of work and a public inspection, a local plan last November. Now, that was approved by a government-appointed inspector that found our local plan to be very sound. It was the first local plan in Berkshire to be approved. It is radical and it is one that is sound. And promptly, the government comes along and decides, on the back of one or two conference dinners with developers, to shred elements of planning, tried and tested, planning policies. So I think we're going to have to be much fleet of foot than we have been. And I would say, in supporting officers on doing that further work, do not be shy about coming forward with much more ambitious Article Fours than we have seen in the past. And I think colleagues will be up for that because it's about the only defence that we have, to maintain the integrity of our local plan. This isn't us just being idiosyncratic, it's us saying to the government, your inspector approved a plan last November and we want to maintain it and deliver it. And Article Fours may well be an important part of that process. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I will also endorse councillor Page's comments on that and the fact that it has significant implications for a local plan that is less than 12 months old. Anyway, do any further councillors wish to speak to this item? Then I will say, my disappointment is on the record and we will move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move into the second section of the meeting to consider the officer reports presented for planning applications. There is one report being considered tonight, Agenda Item 8, Application Reference 200122 for Wensley Road. The report is on pages 35 to 137 of the agenda pack and an update report has also been circulated. Two objectors, Paul Crykant and Karen Makepeace, have asked to speak on this application, which they will do so by telephone link. They have also provided written statements as backup and these are included in the update pack, sent to their two members and published on the council's website. There are also statements in the pack from others who have elected not to speak tonight. Sarah Eli from HTA Design is a planning agent speaking on behalf of the applicant. There are also some others who will be introduced who are available for questions from the applicant. Finally, we have speaking on this item from three Minster Ward councillors, councillors Liz Terry, councillor Ellie Emberson, councillor Paul Giddings and also councillor John Ennis as lead councillor for housing, representing Southcott Ward. Before we hear the public speaking, I will call on the case officer, Jonathan Markwell, to introduce the application.
Thank you, Chair. First, please note that there's an update report for this item. This includes further public consultation responses received since the completion of the main report and some clarifications in terms of garages, trees, Reading buses and electric charging points. It's also noted that the Coly Park residents group have made a further submission this afternoon relating to them not receiving information from the DVLA concerning vehicles registered to addresses in and around the Wensley Road loop, Lesford Road and Heron Way. The residents group suggests that such information should have been sought by the council rather than what the group considers to be updated 2011 census information and the justification submitted by the applicant regarding existing parking levels in the area. Officers can advise that further to predominantly paragraphs 4.25 to 4.41 of the main report and paragraphs 1.4 to 1.5 of the update report, that the methodology provided by the applicant fully accords with the requirements set out in the national planning policy framework and is considered to be robust. The application site comprises land at the western end of Wensley Road in Coly. As you'll see from the site plan and photographs, the site includes three existing tower blocks and two garage areas, but excludes predominantly two-storey dwellings elsewhere, both within and outside of the Wensley Road loop. So this council zone application sees full plant permission for the demolition of 29 garages at the site and development of 46 new dwellings at the northern end of the site, in the form of terrace houses, standalone single dwelling houses and a single four-storey block of flats. The proposal is also involved the reconfiguration and replacement of the onsite publicly accessible open space and play facilities. A series of highways works are also proposed. Most substantially, the four existing vehicle access points will be increased to seven. So two new three-roads are proposed, as shown in this aerial view. On the western side of the site, a one-way north-to-south route is created. The second closes off the existing Wensley Road loop to the north of the existing junction with Lesford Road. Terrace houses will be located through the stopped-up section. The new route essentially continues Lesford Road further to the west, to the south and then to the west of the existing Wensley Court tower block before reconnecting with Wensley Road. The new route will be two-way with buses rerouted at this point. The vehicle parking at the site is to be reorganized and rationalized in a number of areas. Cycle parking, refuse storage and pedestrian access will also be altered. Moving on, there are considered to be both benefits and harmful impacts associated with the proposals. The provision of 46 affordable housing units is a considerable planning benefit when set within the context of the pressing need for housing and in particular affordable housing in the borough. It is considered that 39 of the 46 units can reasonably be secured by the legal agreement, although in practice it is anticipated that all units will be affordable. The design quality of the proposed units, as visualized here, and the quality of accommodation for future occupiers are particular benefits of the scheme. More specifically, the sustainability credentials of the proposals make this an exemplary scheme for the borough, with the proposed strategy to achieve passive house standards and reduce regulated emissions to zero via onsite reductions. The Transport Development Control Manager is satisfied that the layout, following revisions during the course of the application, allows for the sufficient and safe movement of pedestrians and vehicles, including buses, through the proposed development and fully complies with the requirements of both local and national policy. The update report confirms that Reading buses are no content with the proposed layout. In terms of parking, sorry, just missed my spot. Sorry, in terms of parking, the current parking arrangements are not currently standard in terms of size. In contrast, each of the proposed spaces will be to the current standards, so larger and more practical to use, therefore providing an improvement. Although the proposal may appear in simple plan forms well to the counter in becoming more car-dominated, the layout is far safer and more efficient than existing. The methodology provided by the applicant is considered to be robust and the additional parking spaces provided were at an appropriate level to cater for the increase in units proposed. There are acknowledged to be some shortcomings in the proposals, such as the regrettable loss of a number of category B trees, the increased density which will outlook for some existing occupiers, the loss of some existing play facilities and the quantitative reduction in open space at the site. However, a number of these matters will be sufficiently mitigated by various measures applied by the applicant and secured by recommending conditions and legal agreement obligations. For example, the update report now clarifies that the applicant is now fully committed to there being a net gain in trees, this ideally secured onsite by condition, but if this is not possible, then off-site tree planting will be secured by the legal agreement. In terms of open space, as seen here, whilst there is a quantitative reduction, this has been sought to be mitigated by a series of qualitative improvements, with the replacement of open space being more integrated and the amount of formal place space increasing, together with a financial contribution to help upgrade facilities at nearby Courage Park. So ultimately, when applying a critical planning balance to all material considerations, officers conclude that the conflicts with the development plan are outweighed by the benefits of the proposals. Planning permission is therefore recommended, subject to conditions and the completion of a unilateral undertaking legal agreement, as per the main reports and alterations detailed within the update report. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now ask our speakers, Paul Crykant and Karen Makepeace, to present their statements, setting out objections to the planning proposal. I will ask them both to introduce themselves for the record and then we will ask them to present their submissions. They will have 10 minutes to speak to the committee, at which point committee members may ask questions of them for clarification. Thank you. And councillors, could you please indicate in the meeting chat if you wish to ask any questions and I will call you in the order that you indicate. I will now call Paul Crykant and Karen Makepeace to make your initial introduction of yourselves for the record. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Paul Crykant. I'm a resident of Wensley Road, living at number 212, private resident, living directly opposite the development site. I'd like to thank the committee for giving me time to allow for this representation from the Coly Park residents group.
Yes, before you make any substantive points, just an introduction and can Karen Makepeace also please make an introduction.
Yeah, hi, Karen Makepeace, I'm Coly Park resident and a member of the Coly residents group.
Perfect, thank you. You will now both have 10 minutes to share between yourselves. Please address the committee. Thank you.
Okay, so more than 650 people have signed a pre-submission petition and a further 350 have sent in objections after the application was made. The people of Coly Park almost universally reject these plans. The current residents believe that the proposed plan should be rejected on numerous material considerations detailed in our submission of the 3rd of March 2020. Some of the material considerations are identical to the ones in the recent rejected applications in Colliers Way and Riley Road. That document highlights serious safety issues and demonstrates that many local policies will be contravened. Residents of Coly Park have broadly welcomed recent local developments at Rembrandt's Way, Swallows Croft and the New Ministry Development. However, they have expressed dismay, disbelief and incredulity at the proposed plan, particularly given that there are far more suitable council-owned brownfield sites available. It's widely acknowledged that the council would be hard pushed to find an area less suitable for this kind of development, with RBC's only response being they don't have time to find anywhere else. The officer's report acknowledges that proposal will result in damage to the existing environment, citing a significant reduction in open green space, removal of play facilities, loss of trees, increased density of development, making the living environment more overbearing for some residents and a loss of garage facilities. The officer concludes that the benefit of building 46 affordable homes outweighs the damage to the existing area and also cites the environmental credentials as part of his recommendation. There are many other issues that have not been considered properly in the summary, such as flood risk assessment, the introduction of new spare-chased roads, unsafe winds on the new roads, failure of daylight standards, an effective reduction in car parking spaces and a major rat infestation, among many others. It's difficult to understand how sustainability credentials put the balance in favour of the proposal. Large amounts of green community space, many trees nesting bat habitat will be removed and the bats haven't even been mentioned. The natural environment officer has confirmed that local policy EN8 will be contravened due to the net loss of green space, trees amongst other issues. Key stakeholders have expressed concerns, which were simply dismissed. We've already talked about Reading buses and they've given some assurances, but Sports England have asked that replacement facilities be secured and Thames Water have major issues about wastewater and sewer diversions. There's a proposal to re-site the lost play facilities at Courage Park, remote location out of sight of the flats. This is clearly not a credible proposal as young children will potentially travel unsupervised across roads and out of sight of their guardians. I mean, this will be a major child safety issue. As for rats, we have to wait until the development is almost complete before the waste bins are improved. Why do we have to wait? It will be too little, too late, in any event. Local resident James Penn has submitted a statement raising serious concerns about the removal of the existing perimeter fence and the effect on child safety and also issues around speeding traffic, which is a real issue along Wensley Road and traffic will not slow down in the shared space scheme and this will provide an unacceptable danger if the new development goes ahead. The Coly rise development will considerably damage the local environment way beyond acceptable levels. The introduction of a new road network will increase the danger to pedestrians. Numerous local policies will be contravened and the local community have rejected this proposal as well as lodging an unprecedented number of objections. It's also clear that if this committee choose to part a proposal, it will be turning its back on the framework of its own policies, local plan and the NPPF and set an unacceptable precedent for future developments and those wishing to appeal refused applications. We therefore ask that the committee listen to the overwhelming verdict of the local residents and key stakeholders, apply the local policies and other considerations properly and reject this scheme. So that's me complete and now over to Karen.
Hi, right, the severe harm these proposals would cause has to be seen to be believed, which is why residents urged before the COVID outbreak that a site visit must be made to allow residents to demonstrate the reasoning behind their many objections. Unfortunately, this was refused. At every stage of the consultation process, residents showed their overwhelming opposition to the plans but were pushed to think of improvements they'd like to see on the site and to pick one of the options put forward. This was wrongly interpreted in the consultation feedback and planning documents as these residents welcoming certain aspects of the proposals and being in favour of the development. A main concern of residents is the inadequate parking provision that currently exists on site and an ongoing issue for years. The applicant will be ignoring its own policy requirements for new homes and the overall parking ratio for the site will be 0.73, below the 2011 census ownership levels of 0.83 for this area. No visitor spaces are accounted for. A development on the Ministry of Agriculture site in the same census area was approved in 2015 for 71 homes with 144 parking spaces. Why would this site be treated so differently? The officer acknowledges that houses on the inner loop currently use and will continue to use the parking spaces on site. This brings a potential ratio down to 0.62. It is claimed there will be no restriction on using the charging spaces to begin with, but people from the wider area may use these spaces to charge vehicles, which brings the ratio down still further. It is suggested that if people from the wider area do use these spaces, it will free up spaces elsewhere in Coly Park, but many of these people have private driveways, this would doubtfully be the case. No real justification is given in the officer's report for the under-provision of parking, which will cause serious pressure on surrounding roads and contravene the NPPF, TR3, C3, local plan H14 and 4.5.23. Officer's report, Section 6.6 regarding the two new roads acknowledges a substantial level of public concern and claims that a number of amendments have been put in place. The amendments are at the request of Reading buses in order to avoid undue pressure on their vehicles and do nothing to mitigate the risk to pedestrians caused by these new roads. roads running through a currently safe pedestrian site. It is not clear whether these roads are still to be shared spaces or roads with crossing points. Either way, partially sighted and mentally impaired people will now have to navigate these roads, and children will have to cross them to reach the play areas. Claims in Section 4.24 of the report of no risks posed to pedestrians are vehemently disputed. Section 6.13 admits the site will become more car dominant. This is a huge understatement. Policies contravened include TR3, NPPF, and local plan 4.1.36. Section 4.47 states the loss of 91 trees would be unacceptable to the National Environment Officer, and will not accord with policy EM14 and wider council objectives. Section 6.16 admits the loss of over 60% of green and open space is significant, and a shortcoming of the proposals despite various mitigation measures put forward by the applicant. Section 4.54 warns that extra dwellings would also put increased pressure on the need for open space. Policies contravened NPPF, local plan EM14, CC3, 4.3.69, EN8, 4.1.36, CCA, 4.4.108, 4.1.33, 4.4.80, 4.4.81, 7.3.9. Various parts of Section 6 of the report acknowledge another shortfall, a serious harm that will be caused to outlook, including becoming more overbearing, more urbanised, and physically dominant, some having open green space replaced by parking spaces and roads close to and directly outside their windows. Local plan policies contravened CCA, 4.4.108, 4.1.33. Reasons given to justify the harm that will be caused in policies contravened are that more social housing is needed and the development meets sustainability criteria. However, the National Environment Officer finds aspects unacceptable, and the officer's report acknowledges many shortfalls. Building 46 homes at the cost of so much harm to residents of hundreds of existing homes cannot be justified and must be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, do you have any questions of the objectors? Councillor Rowland, please ask your question.
Thank you, Chair, and I would like to... Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, very good. I would like to thank both of the residents, as I often do, letting them know that I was once an activist like them, that would come up before these committees, and it takes quite a lot to do that, and not only, I must say, especially to Ms Makepeace, who was able to list off her policies that she had issues with very adeptly, and that is greatly appreciated. I think that you all have made your presentation very well, and I'm sorry that I've got such a little question after my deep thanks to both of you, but I wanted to know, at the very least, the situation with the bats, and whether you all have observed bats in the area, and if so, what times of year, because I noticed in some of your documentation that was sent through also that there was a recommendation about that being made in September, but I just wanted to know your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shall I answer that, Karen?
Yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, bats are quite a common sight. I mean, I've seen them myself when walking through the proposed development area. They are generally through the early spring through to autumn months, so the survey that was done was actually outside of that period. Many residents have seen rats. They say they swoop down, you know, they're quite a sight to see. So yeah, there is a real bat habitat there that is in real danger of being removed. Many of the trees that the bats apparently roost in have already been, have had branches removed, et cetera. So, you know, all I can say is that yes, there is a live bat community there. They are not there in the winter months, and, you know, if they're going to be assessed, then they need to be assessed at the right time of year.
Thank you. Chair, just a follow-up, if I could?
Certainly.
Thank you. So Paul, could you tell me if you know that they are definitely roosting within the trees within the red line of this site?
Well, this is what the guys from the flats tell us, because, you know, we're talking about, I mean, I live at virtually ground level and I can't see, but the guys that live up on sort of 8th, 10th floor, they can actually see, and they say that the bats go into the trees. So, you know, we can assume then that there's a real bat habitat there. And that's as much as I can honestly tell you. I mean, I'm not an expert on bats by any means, so I'm only telling you, you know, what we know as laypeople in terms of bat habitats.
Thank you, and thank you, Chair, and thank you, Paul and Karen, for all your work and answering so many points. Thank you so well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, do we have any further questions of the objectors? Okay, then I'm going to thank both, particularly, and say that probably what's prevented many more questions coming your way is how comprehensive the documents and written submissions have been made, particularly, and I would commend you on the 46-page document that was produced in March as part of this consultation, which has allowed a lot of work to be done in the background to fully understand your concerns with this application, and will thank you. I'm going to ask you to move on to mute now, and then we'll call the applicant to speak. Thank you. And now, can you please introduce yourself to the committee? After you have introduced yourself to the committee, you will then have up to 10 minutes to make a statement. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Ely, and I'm a planning consultant at HDA Design, representing the applicant Reading Borough Council. This application is for the demolition of 29 garages and 46 new homes on the Coly Rise site on Wensley Road. The new homes, play spaces, parking, and landscaping are the first phase of regeneration within a second phase of improvements to the existing residential towers to follow. The scheme also forms part of a wider regeneration strategy of council-owned housing sites across the borough. All dwellings will be designed to achieve net zero carbon, using a combination of renewable energy sources and applying fabric-first passive house principles to the building construction. This is key in terms of the climate emergency declared by Reading, and it will also significantly reduce the energy bills of future residents, thereby helping to alleviate fuel poverty. There is a clear need for housing in Reading. Policy identifies a shortfall of 230 dwellings that cannot be provided within the borough itself during the planned period, as it is a tightly defined urban area, and sites for new development are limited. Therefore, policy supports suburban renewal. The land at Coly Rise has been identified as suitable for regeneration, and the 46 new homes at Coly Rise will reduce the housing shortfall. There is a critical need for affordable housing within Reading and wider Berkshire. 406 affordable homes are required per annum, and this requirement will not be met. This application for 100% affordable homes, which will benefit from Homes England funding, will provide much-needed affordable family homes of three bedrooms and smaller units of one and two bedrooms. The housing is designed to a high quality, meeting nationally-described space standards and Reading policy requirements, including private amenity space and wheelchair-accessible units. The siting and location of the proposed blocks minimises the impact on the amenity of existing residents. A number of design measures have been taken, such as offsetting windows to ensure that where the back-to-back distances of 20 metres cannot be achieved, privacy is maintained for all residents. In terms of daylight-sunlight impact, the report submitted for the application was assessed by the building research establishment, the BRE, and subsequently was followed up with additional information, including further daylight and sunlight and the overshadowing analysis of the neighbouring buildings. Whilst there is some impact on the daylight levels to a small number of properties closest to the site, the daylight levels achieved were determined as acceptable by BRE through a second independent review. The Coly Rise proposal will increase the overall density within the red line boundary from 113 units per hectare to 132 units per hectare. The proposed density exceeds the indicative density ranges which are set out in policy. However, the local plan is clear that these will not be applied as hard and fast rules, and the particular characteristics of a site may well mean that a density outside these ranges is appropriate. We consider that the proposed density is appropriate on this site, as it is well-connected to a town centre by a regular bus route. Sustainable urban development is achieved through increasing density, and this is supported by policy at all levels. The siting height and massing of the new dwelling has been carefully considered in relation to characteristics of the site, and it is not considered to be an over-dense development. Development will be facilitated by a number of key moves. Firstly, the communal amenity and open space will be consolidated into the centre of the site, providing a well-integrated space for the existing and new residents. It is recognised that there is a lot of open space, however, the landscaping strategy will improve the usability and quality of amenity of the open space, which will be designed to be safe and accessible with facilities for a range of ages, including an outdoor gym. The removal of the moogah has been in consultation with Reading Borough's Parks team. Under the guidance of their strategy, which is to focus resources for older teenage children at Courage Park, the play space at Wensley Road will be equipped for toddlers and juniors. Development is also facilitated by the reconfiguration of the Wensley Road loop and the reorganisation of car parking spaces. A total of 230 parking spaces are proposed, which comprises reprovision of the 192 existing car parking spaces on site, and an additional 38 spaces for new development, at a ratio of 0.83 vehicles per dwelling. This ratio reflects census data on car ownership at this location, and it is currently higher than it exists on site. Of the total parking spaces, 16 will be wheelchair-accessible, which meets the policy requirements, and 36 electric vehicle charging points will be provided, which exceeds policy. The proposal improves permeability through the site by creating an increased number of access points into the site and two new through routes. Surface treatment changes will be introduced for traffic-calming purposes. Permeable paving will be provided where new roads are created, acting as attenuation and reducing surface water. As part of the reconfiguration of the open space, there is a requirement to remove a total of 66 individual trees and 209 trees within groups, which will also facilitate Phase Two works. A number of the trees that will be removed are within self-seeded groups. Separate to this, three turkey oak trees are proposed for removal by Reading Borough Council due to health and safety reasons that are not associated with the proposed development. The proposed tree strategy will introduce better specimens, a wider species variety, and better-placed trees, which will be of overall benefit in terms of biodiversity and the long-term maintenance of healthy trees. A total of 184 new trees will be planted as part of the proposed development. A further 75 trees will be secured by condition, providing 279 new trees in total, thereby providing an overall net gain in trees. A survey has been undertaken on site to assess for the presence of bats. All trees being removed have been assessed as providing low or negligible suitability for roosting bats, and require no further survey. Buildings on site that are to be demolished are also assessed as being of negligible suitability for roosting bats, and require no further survey. As it was deemed that the site was of low suitability for foraging commuting bats, there are no requirements for further activity surveys. The development also requires the demolition of existing garages, and every household that currently holds the tenancy of a garage within the red line boundary will be offered an alternative garage within the Coly area. We note that the submitted soil report states that there is presence of asbestos found in the made ground at a location on the western side of the application site. Analysis indicates that based on the concentration of asbestos, the soil will be considered non-hazardous, although it may be prudent to undertake further testing for asbestos and prepare a remediation method statement. Provision has been made to ensure that waste and wading bins are secure, and it will not encourage further problems from rodents, which we are aware are an issue in the existing bin stores on the estate. Comprehensive consultation has been undertaken with residents during the design of the scheme. Residents have been supportive of the proposal, and the design and layout of the scheme has been informed by their ideas, comments, and suggestions through a series of very well-attended public consultation events. We have listened to their views on the proposed scheme, which has been amended to reflect their comments. Applicants work with officers to ensure that a comprehensive application pack has been prepared, and the proposal is in accordance with the adopted local plan and national policy. Therefore, we respectfully ask for the application to be approved in line with the officer's recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now call upon councillor Josh Williams, who has previously indicated he has a question. Thank you, councillor Williams.
Thank you very much, Chair. Hi, I'm Josh. Thank you very much, Sarah, for dialing in this evening. I've got, first of all, an apology. My connection dropped twice during what you were saying, so I hope I'm not recovering ground you spoke about too much. Regarding the density figures being outside the recommended range, our local plan says, and I think you quoted it, that particular characteristics of a site may well mean density outside these ranges is appropriate.
Yes.
Could you tell me a little bit more about what you believe the characteristics of the site are that justify the over-high density in terms of recommendation? It can't just be because a bus goes there. There must be other characteristics that you think justify that density. I wonder if you could talk about those for a minute? Thank you.
I think in terms of the density, we have a situation where there is a number of towers, which obviously increases the density on the site. But as we've explained about how to facilitate development, it's through the consolidation and rearrangement of the car parking spaces and the demolition of garages, which creates, which enables development and enables new buildings to be put on site. I think it's probably worth noting that the density is proposed at 132 units per hectare, and in this location, the urban location is considered to be 60 to 120 dwellings per hectare is appropriate, and therefore we don't consider that the increase above that number is excessively high. But we think that the removal of, or rather, the rearrangement of the site facilitates an increase in the density, and there will be measures taken to ensure that amenity is not encroached upon for the existing residents.
Thank you. Councillor Williams, do you have any follow-ups?
No, thank you very much for that answer.
Thank you. Councillors, do we have any further questions of the applicants or agents? Thank you. Karen Rowland, please address the committee. I'm asked a question.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Sarah. I'm going to continue along, and thank you for your presentation, Sarah. It's well put out and highlights a number of issues. I discussed the bats earlier with the residents, and the residents are clearly seeing bats in the spring and summer period, and I know you're saying that, quote, "no additional survey needs to be prepared", but I was wondering when those surveys, what time of year those surveys were done, if they were done when the bats were the most active, and if there would be any possible consideration to any further bat surveys, or is just the answer to that, no, we don't need to do any more bat surveys? Because I, for one, do not believe residents are seeing things. I think that what they're saying is valid, and I would like to see what we could understand about that, if appropriate. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
In relation to the bat surveys, the ecologists undertook the initial survey during the winter month, and they said it was poor weather conditions. They acknowledged that, and they visited the site again to carry out ground-level tree assessments, and also the garages and the water tanks on two separate occasions. And they say that it is acceptable and in line with best practice guidance to carry out these assessments of internal or external buildings and tree inspections during the winter months. They have advised me that if further surveys are then deemed necessary to gain further data, they could be carried out during the active period for bats, which is May to September or October. I don't know if that answers your question.
Through you, Chair, a follow-up question, if I might?
Certainly.
Right. Well, it kind of does, and I think it kind of leaves some room there. It's my supposition, and I'm not alone, and once again, I'm not a bat expert, but summer kind of evaluations, spring/summer kind of evaluations, might be reasonable, and would there possibly be room to mitigate that as necessary, if we might?
Well, I think, I mean, another point they made to me was that they considered the site to be low suitability for foraging and commuting bats and therefore no further activity surveys were required. I'm just checking my notes, sorry. They say that there is an option for doing further activity surveys, but the information will not affect the impact assessed by the recommendations for what they are stating.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Okay. I will now call councillor Stanford-Bay to ask a question.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I just ask about the two things? It's the loss of green space and the trees, the losses of trees. In the initial report, we had under section 4.54, it did say concerns were raised about the loss of green space. It is because we've got the towers there already, it is a densely populated area and then we're looking at adding more buildings to it. I am delighted to hear that the proposed housing is passive house and it'll be carbon neutral and it'll help reduce fuel poverty. Those are all wonderful things, but I am very concerned about the loss of the public open space. You know, we've been in lockdown for months, people are now emerging from it, some people are still shielding and it's been really tough on families with young children to having to stay home and not being able to go out. And, you know, we've had this insufferable heatwave last week and that's made it very difficult. To be able to go outside and sit under a shady tree, it makes a tremendous difference to children and families. And socialising for small children, particularly the under-fives, learning how to play with others, turn-take is an essential step in their development, allowing them to be able to go off to school successfully, talking and speaking and running about and everything else that we need our children to do. So it's really important. We're looking at removing that green space with this application. Now, I do see that the idea is that further enhance what we made at Courage Park, but Courage Park is a distance away. So how is that possible that we will be able to enable children to get the same level of outside exercise that they have currently? And secondly, with regards to the trees, I know we discussed this at our pre-meet on Monday and we have had further information in the update pack about trees. Why has it taken so much pushing to get to a position where there's been an agreement that the developer will put more trees on-site? You know, the residents are very unhappy about the loss of the trees and we need to ensure that there is sufficient tree cover, because the tree cover provides shade in hot weather, it helps clean the air and it helps intercept rain if we have torrential downpours, so that, you know, prevent flooding. So trees are really important to all of us. So can you just clarify the situation with loss of the green space and the trees, please? Thank you.
I would like to pass this question on to Mark Donaldson, who is our landscape architect, who has worked on this scheme. I wonder if Mark might be able to answer those issues in relation to the open space strategy and the arboricultural assessments that are associated with this application.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Chair. I hope you can all hear me. My name's Mark Donaldson. I'm a landscape architect from HT Design. Thank you for your comments, councillor. I think firstly on the loss of open space, we do acknowledge that there is an overall loss of open space to facilitate the development of the new social housing. But what we've tried to do is really to sort of consolidate the kind of central green space as a really exciting, playable space for a wider age range of children than the current play facilities provide. And with particular reference to young children and toddlers, under-five-year-olds, we will be providing a dedicated play space for under-five-year-olds, a play space for five-to-11-year-olds and also exercise opportunities for adults within the central green space and also for older people as well. So to try and make it a really kind of multi-generational space that is surrounded by both the existing and the new housing, that will be well overlooked and a safe place to play. But not only that, really try and build on the qualities that that central green space has. It has a bit of magic about it, that space with the oak trees and the existing plane trees and really make it a kind of natural play space, a place to encourage imaginative play and adventurous play and, you know, make it a really exciting, you know, play space for a wide range of children and adults and older people as well. And in terms of the loss of trees, we are confident that we can deliver a net increase in the number of trees on-site. And we've given, you know, a lot of consideration to the tree strategy on-site. We've proposed a range of different tree species. The new trees that go in will be of a substantial size and there'll be a minimum of a semi-mature-sized tree, so there will be a minimum of six metres tall. And there'll be a range of different tree types within that, as well as new succession planting of new oak trees to eventually supersede some of the existing oak trees that are on-site that are coming to the end of their lifespan. And there'll be a wide range of tree species as well to try and enhance the biodiversity and ecology value of the site as well. We have given considerable thought to the new tree strategy.
Thank you. Councillor Stanford-Bay, do you have any further follow-ups?
No, thank you.
Thank you. I'll now call councillor Lovelock, please ask your question.
Thank you. Could we turn to the garages situation? I understand that some new garages are going to be provided up the road from the site so that people can be offered a garage as near as possible to their existing one. Could you just talk me through how many garages are going to be left and how many new ones we're going to have and where they're going to be in relation to the site, please? And will they be bigger garages? Because most of us, I'm sure, who've got garages over a certain age, find that modern cars don't fit into them very easily. So are they going to be more useful for a car to be put in rather than just storage? Thank you.
Thank you.
With relation to the garages, I've been advised that every household that currently holds the tenancy of a garage within the redline area will be offered an alternative garage within the Coly area. This offer may be a void garage in one of the existing blocks in the area or within newly-built garages at a nearby site that is suitable for this purpose. And residents will be contacted in order of those who've been a tenant the longest to provide the reallocation process with some structure. But, and it will have enough garages, there will be enough garages for each household to have a replacement. But at this stage, I don't have any further details about that.
Well, maybe not. Well, I could do with knowing when these new garages will be provided so that people have an offer before they're required to vacate their current garage.
As I understand, just in relation to the sizes of the garages, I've been advised that the new garages will be to a modern standard. As in terms of when they will be provided, I'm just checking that detail.
Thank you. We can return to that in a moment when you've had the opportunity to review your notes. Councillor Lovelock, do you have any further questions?
No, thanks, Chair, that's it, thank you.
I will follow up, but if I forget, please do remind me. Councillor Robinson, can you ask your question? Councillor Robinson, would you be on mute?
My apologies, Chair.
Thank you.
Yep. My question is, it's actually in connection with what councillor Rowland was referring to in terms of the bat survey. I mean, bats are in hibernation from November to mid-May, so any assessment done during that period would probably prove totally useless in terms of where they roost. And it's about the fact that they're roosting or, you know, people have seen them roosting in the trees on-site. Surely, an assessment should be done when they're in that state. So from mid-May through to November, and that would provide a valid, you know, assessment of whether they are there or not. So to say that, you know, there is no need for a further assessment, I find quite unbelievable in terms of what's been said.
Does anyone from the agent side have any comments on councillor Robinson's statement? Then I will ask, yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me? Sorry, it's Sarah Ealy, I think I was muted just now. As I understand, the, that they have not been found to be suitable, you know, trees that are suitable for roosting. It might be that there are commuting bats and that might be what has been observed by residents. So, I mean, they've stated that none of the garages with the water tank provide suitable conditions for hibernating bats. And again, as I said before, the trees have low or negligible suitability for roosting bats. So it could be that the bats that are being seen are those that are coming into the site from land to the south, for example, the Coly Water Meadows Nature Reserve, which might be a place where they are roosting and then only coming onto site.
Thank you. Councillor Robinson, do you have any further questions?
No, thank you for that explanation. That's usable.
Thank you. Councillor Rowland, you've indicated you have a question.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and I apologise. This is for the applicant. We're talking about making a change with, we're losing the mooga and we're moving play over, or play for older children primarily over to an enhanced area over in Courage Park. Earlier, residents spoke about the challenge of getting over to Courage Park, that it wasn't just a hop, skip and a jump. And I forgot to query them about a description of that, but can you enlighten me as to what you know about residents coming from this area into Courage Park? How easy that is? And is there a pathway over there? Have you all thought about enhancing that pathway or anything like that? Thank you.
Could I pass this question on to Mark Donaldson?
You're currently muted, I believe, Mark Donaldson? Perfect. Thank you. You're now off mute and you can address the committee. Thank you.
But, thank you, Chair, thank you councillor Rowland. And yes, I am aware of the facilities at Courage Park and I think my understanding is that as part of the kind of the improvement works that would be done to Courage Park and part of that would also be to look at improving the route and the journey from Wensley Road over to Courage Park so that it wouldn't just be looking at the park itself in isolation, it would be looking at that journey between the site and the park as well.
Thank you. Councillor Rowland, do you have any follow-up?
Thank you. I could just ask the officer indeed to confirm that and I would be pleased to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. During our debate, you can always ask that question. I will just ask Sarah Ealy if she's had the opportunity to review her notes and is able to answer councillor Lovelock's previous question.
Yes, in relation to the garages, the intention is to build them out in advance. Sites have been identified, but they do need planning permission. There's no reason to believe why permission won't be granted on these sites, but this work has to be undertaken in advance of being able to allocate garage spaces to residents. So it is in hand.
Thank you. Councillor Lovelock, are you satisfied with that answer or do you have a follow-up?
No, I think we just need to be sure that that can be achieved ahead of people being asked to get out of their current garage. So it's important.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from councillors? Then I have one question, which is in relation to the revised condition on garages. It currently states that a household will be provided with an alternative tenancy. For clarification, is that as a household or is that if, for example, there are two tenancies from the same household, they may have the option to get two garages or one? Or adequate space thereof?
I just need to check my notes on that one, Chair.
Certainly.
Yes, as I understand, if there are, if there is a household that has two garages, they would also have those two garages spaces replaced, they would have access to two garages if that is what they wanted.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Then, as no further, councillors are indicating that they wish to ask questions, I will thank you and also thank you for agreeing to the altered conditions that we can find in the update pack, as I provide considerable clarification of areas of concern for members of this committee. I thank you for your time. I will now ask you all to go on to mute via our officers and will then call councillor Liz Terry to make a statement to the committee. Councillors speaking to the committee, who are not members of the committee, have the ability to make a statement, but we as councillors and members of the committee may not ask any questions in relation to those statements. Thank you. Councillor Terry, please address the committee.
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me all right?
We can indeed, thank you.
Local councillors were the first to recognise that this would be a challenging development when we were advised by council officers that we'd been awarded a grant of almost £4 million by the government to provide council houses, therefore the most affordable rented properties you can get in this country, I believe. We asked for a public meeting to be called straight away and insisted on a range of consultation activity to take place, which the council, I'm sure, would have done anyway. It will be for the planning committee to decide if the mitigations referred to are acceptable with the conditions and the legal agreement mentioned in the recommendations. As ward councillors, we'll be addressing concerns as we have understood them. And I'll start with some and then I will be handing over to councillor Emberson and then councillor Gittings, as you know. In relation to garages, I know that you've asked for some clarification, but I just want to say that from the very start, myself, councillor Emberson and Gittings made it very clear to the council staff that garage provision would have to be replaced for local people, particularly those living in the high-rise flats. The garages, whilst too small for some modern cars, provide important additional storage space. As you know, a combination of void garages elsewhere in the Wensley Road area and sites for new garages also in the Wensley Road area will provide enough replacement garages. I am pleased to see the amendment in the update report that the applicants...
Hi, this is Yarni from Eight Pecs Bean Coats.
No, I'm just on a Zoom meeting, planning committee meeting.
So we can hear you.
Yes. Councillor Lovelock, can I please ask you to mute your own microphone? And now is a good opportunity to remind all other councillors that they should mute their microphones while not addressing the committee. Thank you. Sorry for the interruption, councillor Terry, please continue. Terry, please continue.
I am pleased to see the amendment in the update report that the applicant will offer, as opposed to will look to offer, an alternative garage. As I said, Ward councillors have had it confirmed that the council will be able to offer any household that currently has two garages, a direct replacement for both. The new wording refers to one per household. This is misleading and not what Ward councillors have been told on a number of occasions. So I would be grateful if the committee is, if it's minded to agree this application and make sure that this is absolutely clear. Moving on to parking, as you know, in total a number of parking spaces, the number of parking spaces will increase from 192 to 230, including disabled spaces and 36 with the ability to access electric charging points. It has been confirmed, and I know it's in the update report, that the 30, I said 36, 32 spaces will be available to all vehicle types. I know this is something that was asked, so I just want to make sure that it's clear to residents that if this goes ahead, those spaces will be available to all vehicle types. This is a future proof thing. As we know, we will all be moving towards hybrid or full electric vehicles at some point in the future. The size of the parking bays are also being made larger, and that's really important. There's a lot of overparking on the parking bays that are laid out at the moment, and this means that there will be more space for more cars if it goes ahead. I should say that in addition to this, and separate to the planning application, Ward councillors have been asking for improvements to be undertaken between the Wensley Loop and the Wensley Community Centre, and I'm hopeful that those will come through, which will regularise the parking and improve the flow of vehicles along that stretch of road. We were concerned about the issues raised by Reading buses, but I'm pleased to see in the update that they have now confirmed that they are content with the proposals. I only also want to ask that in terms of the demolition and construction method statements that may be agreed in the future, I see, I think somewhere in the various documents, there was a reference to Saturday working from eight o'clock in the morning to one o'clock. This is too early on a Saturday and should at least be from nine o'clock in the morning till 1pm. And I'm sure that my colleagues will make other comments about the construction phases. That's it from me. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Terry. Can I call councillor Emerson to please address the committee and make your statement?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with all of the comments that councillor Terry has already made this evening. And I too acknowledge the concerns that local residents have about this planning application. And indeed, we've heard from two of the residents tonight who have engaged throughout the process. I want to speak to some of the themes of the application, and I must start off by saying that this application provides the opportunity to build council housing for local people with a housing need. The planning report does not put any obligation on the council to have a local lettings policy. However, my ward colleagues and I have been very clear from the outset that should you be minded to approve this tonight, we expect the development to provide opportunities for local people in housing need. Such a policy would mean priority being given to those residents with a housing need that live in the high-rises and wider Coly area. I frequently receive casework from residents in the Coly area who are in overcrowded accommodation or might be struggling with a disability or need to relocate or downsize because they're struggling to maintain their larger home. In the Coly high-rises alone, there are 40 households with a housing need. And indeed, across the borough, there are currently over 3,400 households on the housing register demonstrating the housing need right across Reading. And during the lockdown period, the council have accommodated over 160 people who were found to be rough sleeping or at risk of homelessness. Clearly, it's imperative that as a council, we put that provision on the table for affordable housing and right at the top of our agenda. You will have noted that the planning requirement is for 39 of the properties to be affordable. However, in recognition of the needs of the town, all 46 homes would be social rent. Fundamentally then, approval of the proposed application will enable housing needs to be addressed within the local area. Speaking to the loss of open space, the report acknowledges the loss of quantity, and it is very important, in my view, for the committee to consider whether mitigation in the form of increased quality of open space merits approval of this application. When we have been out speaking to residents on the estate, comments are frequently made that central space needs an upgrade and better integration, and I would personally welcome such an upgrade. And this application does enable this, but to the detriment of open space. It is also worth highlighting that the applicant does intend to mitigate the loss of space as far as possible by upgrading the existing landscape, as well as the greenscape, green space, sorry, and play facilities currently in the central area of the high-rises. The new facilities would be aimed at younger children, and there will also be gyms, games area being removed through this application. I know that the play services and council's housing service would contribute £116,000 towards significantly enhancing the mooga at Courage Park, which is a short- My final point, I think it's also worth raising with the committee that this brings the potential for enhanced emergency access to the estate. The road changes proposed would enable access to the site via seven entrances rather than the current four, and I would personally welcome this. To conclude, I hope, and I'm sure that the committee will carefully assess the merits of this application and come into a decision this evening. Applications like this offer great opportunities, but there are always challenges to be considered as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, councillor Emerson. Councillor Gittings, please address the committee.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add a little to what my Minster Ward councillors have already said, and I will attempt to be brief. I've been a councillor for Minster Ward for 18 years. And during that time, on the second Saturday of each month, come rain or shine, sometimes arctic blasts, we hold our advice surgery on Coly Community Centre, a couple of hundred yards from this proposed development. And I can only say, honestly say that over those 18 years, 200-plus surgeries, the vast majority of those attending came with housing issues. And a very high proportion of those were related to the need to either get a council property, move to a bigger council property, or downsize to a more appropriate property because of issues like the bedroom tax. And it's not just the advice surgery. A high proportion of the emails received, and councillor Emerson touched on this as well, from constituents are around that housing need. In fact, the latest we all got for a resident on Coly Park was someone with a very big housing need, and which I hope would be met by a development like this. So, in that context, when the government offered a considerable sum of money, I think £4 million, to help fund the council house development, with Coly Park identified as the site for this new bill, I believe it's our absolute duty as Ward councillors to give this our full consideration. But, this is a very big but, and other councillors have spoken to this, and my ward colleagues, we only want a development that was of a high standard, and that the concerns of residents, and we've heard them tonight, and thank you very much for coming along and airing those concerns, concerns over issues such as parking, garages, open space, play parks, transport, or indeed bats were dealt with. And now it's up to the planning committee to use their best judgment to decide if those concerns are met. I did also want to highlight a couple of aspects of this development that I believe are worthy of further mention. I recently took over as chair of the Strategic Environment Planning and Transport Committee, and a lot of the work of that committee, as the title indicates, is around improving Reading's environment and helping us to tackle the climate emergency that was referred to in the officer report, which we, as a local authority, we recently declared a climate emergency. That means significantly reducing the carbon footprint. So in this application, I'm pleased to see there is a commitment, not just to replace, but add to the overall tree cover lost in developing this area. We as Ward councillors were very disappointed that in the original report, there was not a direct commitment to do this, but now, as we've seen in the update report, there is. I'm also pleased to see there is the provision, I think, for 36 parking spaces with electric charging points for future use. The key word here is future use by EV vehicles as they come on stream. They're going to be available for other people to park until that time. But crucially, the 46 units, as again, as we mentioned before, are going to be built to the highest sustainability standard using what is called passive house principles. And these will be amongst the first in the country, council houses to be built in this way. And that's covered 0.686 in the report. This means they will be incredibly well insulated and ventilated, will mean heat is retained in the properties, not lost. And crucially, the energy bills will for the tenants be very, very small, I think up to 90% of the normal bill. And with use of solar panels and air source heat pumps, this will really help that, as well as I think there's going to be much reduced water use and bills for tenants using this construction method. This, I hope, will set a precedent for all housing that is being built in Reading and comes in for your planning committee, not just council stock, because every home and building in the town was as well insulated as this. That will be a major step towards dramatically reducing our overall carbon emissions. So in conclusion, I only want the committee to support this if they see this as a high-quality development built to the highest standards, meeting local housing need, and with other considerable benefits of the community through planning gain. It's only what the residents of Coly Park deserve. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Gittings. I will now call upon councillor John Ennis to please address the committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Fully support the planning application, as I would as lead councillor for housing. And I need to have some sort of background to the to the application as lead councillor. I've been on planning for a long time, a while now, and I've looked at various affordable housing applications as a planning application member. But I felt it was important and transparent for me to come off the planning applications committee tonight, to declare an interest and be transparent because I felt it would have been wrong for me to sit on the planning application committee tonight with a declared interest. In the meantime, I want to speak in favour of the application, which would be to build 100% affordable housing. How many times have we been able to say that in the planning applications committee? Forty-six, 100% affordable. Combination with family homes, we often hear about flats, it's only flats, it's flats, flats, flats. These will be, many of these will be family homes with gardens. And as you've heard before to the planning, I want you to to take into consideration on your decision, it will be of the highest quality, passive house standards, zero carbon, neutral, the greenest houses you could build in the country. Go take a look at Conway Close if you want to see examples, and they will be even better than that. Now, whilst I'm saying that and getting enthusiastic about wanting to build 46 100% affordable units, we must take on board and totally acknowledge the extent of the objections to understand the numbers, significant numbers. And I understand why they're worried to have an estate plonked as they see it near them with a potential of loss of parking, loss of open green space. I hope that they would read the report, particularly the updated report. We too, like the objectors, want to make improvements to the area, want to make improvements to Coly Park. And we firmly believe as a councillor and as a lead councillor, that these applications, there's going to be two, one now and one in the future, will actually, and the significant investment will actually improve the area, will provide exceptional council housing, and will upgrade the area in regards to parking, in regards to access, in regards to safety, and regards to access to Courage Park, which is 0.2 miles, 0.2 miles, significantly less than half a mile. And if the report says there will be a improved access into the Courage Park, where there will be primarily for teenagers, whilst the area, the green space there is a loss acknowledged, but the area will be enhanced and improved particularly for very young children, so they won't have to travel that far to be able to enjoy the facilities. You know, the question is why Coly Park? And it's part of a strategy, it's part of a strategy that Reading are taking on board to try and build as many affordable, 100% affordable houses as possible. Now, you've heard the applicant talking about, and councillor Emerson, and councillor Terry and councillor Gittings about the need for affordable. But we're in the midst of a national housing crisis, which has engulfed this country for the last decade or more. And there's a significant demand locally as well, where a successful economy has increased the prices of housing, whilst many are being left behind. We have currently 3,417 households on the register, which, which, you know, councillor Devine is very quick to say is not good enough, and he's absolutely right, he's absolutely correct. And we have over 150 statutory homeless households in temporary accommodation individuals that have been made homeless during the lockdown. It's going to get tougher. We know that's going to get tougher. So every opportunity we got, we're going to get to build 100% affordable. And it's in the midst of a strategy. I know the report from the objectors talked about why not build there. Well, we're going to do that. We're going to build on Southcote Library. We're going to look at Conway Close. We're going to look at the Arthur Hill Development for key worker housing. We have 40 units that we are going to put forward for planning application at the back of the cattle market for homeless people. We've got numerous planning applications going on board in Whitley, Southcote, and other areas for housing land infill. So every opportunity we're getting, we're going to build. It's not because we can't be bothered to build it elsewhere. If we get the opportunity, we will attempt to improve areas with investment, but by building 100% affordable housing. And we were we were complimented by the Conservative government. We do work cross-party in an attempt to achieve 100% affordable housing. And the Conservative government, in which councillor Sharm was once a housing minister, actually worked with us to achieve and obtain a grant to build houses like what we're going to be doing. And we worked with the Ministry of Housing, and they liked our projects, and they offered us grant funding. And not many councils get the opportunity to do this. And if we can do that further, we will. We can only build on housing land. Many people have said, why don't you build there? Why don't you build there? We don't own that land, and they want to build or whatever, private want to do what they're going to do. We have limited control. We only can build on our own land. Hence, areas like Coly and other areas are opportunities to build 100% affordable. And I totally agree as lead councillor, the local Coly need. In the flats themselves, many might have objected to the application who would be on a housing need. Many of them, if they're listening tonight, they're on band C, they're overcrowded, and there's a number of them. They would feel the benefit. They would be the ones that we would want them to feel the benefit. Any tenant in the blocks on housing need on band C, particularly band C, should feel the benefit of this application. So the numbers that we want, and I'll be following up as lead councillor, is not, is local people with housing need getting the opportunities to move in to them houses. If you go and have a look at Conway Close, I took a family up there when they moved in, and what they said was it was like winning the lottery. For council tenants who are homeless, it's like winning the lottery. I feel I will move in. I move on, sorry. I would like to move in, actually. It's a lovely house, but I will move on. I don't think they'd let me. What the situation with the actual application, if you read the report and the update, is the improvements to tree planting. There will be more trees of a better quality as well. We've raised the issue of the garages. My view, and it was the view when I discussed it with housing officers, that anybody that has two garages, and we know they're individuals who are concerned, and rightly so, and rightly so, will have the opportunity to have two garages on there. They've had two garages for a number of years, and they should not be impacted. Anybody with garages should not be impacted because of this development. Parking, we've discussed, and the buses have also put in. The trees, I just want to make one point, it's very important to look at the trees and the overall context of what the development, the application, and the second development will look like. Because not only do we want to do this for 46 homes, the second application will be submitted in the next 12 months, and will complete the programme of work in the area, which will include new windows, new refuse areas, which are needed now, appreciate that, and improvements to the entrances and the fabric of Wensley Road towers, alongside new landscaping and extensive tree planting. Thank you for letting me speak. I will eventually finish, but I feel it's important for me to have to say to try and reassure particularly objectors, I know it's going to be difficult, to also understand the issues that the planning application members would have. You know, finally, as a councillor, as councillor Emerson has- You know, finally, as a councillor, as councillor Emberson has said, I've had too many residents in Reading, too many families with children stuck in substandard private sector housing in HMOs, in others, you know, pleading about damp overcrowding, cramped conditions, potential of illness to the children, the want, the need for desperate housing. It's a major need in this country, it's a major need in Reading. And I really believe that with affordable housing application in this area and others, particularly this area as it's been, we can include family homes with gardens, parking spaces, and it will go a long way to alleviating homelessness. As I said, for them, it would be like winning the lottery. So please support this application and look forward to working with tenants in the area and residents in the area to make life better for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ennis. I'm now going to ask our case officer if he's got any comments to make before I open the meeting to our normal debate. Jonathan, do you have any comments at this point? I take silence for a no, and then I will, sorry, Jonathan, go ahead.
Sorry councillor McCann, I'm just trying to get off mute. Yeah, obviously, there are a couple of points made there, so just respond on those couple of points immediately. In terms of the demolition and construction method statements, as mentioned from councillor Terry about the Saturday hours being nine to one rather than eight to one, that shouldn't be an issue. So we can make a, make a note of that in the, in the condition. In terms of the point about the open space or the improvements to Courage Park and improving the access to Courage Park, that is explicitly referenced within the report, although it has been kind of discussed with the applicant. And you'll note the applicant's response during those questions were kind of positive, that yes, they would be looking to incorporate access improvements from Wensley Road to Courage Park as, as part of those works. So we can weave that into the, the legal agreement obligation, as well as upgrading the play facilities, that also incorporates improving the access to it as well. I think Julie was going to come back to you on the, the bat point as well, so I'll hand it over to Julie as well.
Thank you. Hello there. Yes, so the question was asked about whether we should have a bat survey carried out in the summer months or not. We have got a condition already recommended for ecological enhancements, and that does include the provision of bat boxes within the site. And on that basis, and also given the protected status of bats, I think it would be reasonable to ask the developer to carry out a, a further survey in the summer months to try and just to establish where the bats are, and that will obviously help in improving where the bat boxes go in terms of, you know, where the, where the bats are, are loose if, if indeed they are, and where the bat boxes should go to be of better benefit for them, for the bats. So I think that would be reasonable to add to the condition. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'm now going to open it for general debate from councillors. I've had previous indications from councillor Lovelock, who'll be called first, followed by councillor Josh Williams, to be followed by councillor Ricky Devine. Councillor Lovelock, please address the committee.
Thank you, Chair. And first of all, can I, I say I, I'll share the concern that we weren't able to go on a site visit, but I did actually go down to Coly at the weekend, once I've got the, the report and all the comments from residents to have a look around. And I have to say that I think when you look at what's proposed, once it's there, it will provide considerable enhancements to the area, including much, much improved, it may be smaller, but much improved, open space for people to enjoy, play areas and so on. And we've had the issue about how older children can get to the Courage's site addressed already. I can remember when we first did the D Park regeneration project, which is in my ward, there were very, very similar concerns from local residents, understandably concerned about parking, concerned about density, concerned about loss of garages and so on and so forth. And those were issues that were very real to the existing residents. But we also had there people living in substandard accommodation, old concrete flats and so on. And the joy for people who moved from a damp concrete flat into a brand-new house with their own back garden was, made it all worthwhile. And I do think that when this application, if we agree it tonight, is built out, it will provide a much improved environment, not only for the new residents, but also for the existing residents, particularly when we get on to the phase two improvements to the flats. So I would very much support agreeing this application this evening. And we've had a long set of questions and so on, but there are one or two issues that I think we just need to be absolutely watertight about. I think we've had the garages issue addressed, but I do think we ought to perhaps include in the recommendations that all those with a garage, and that includes people who have more than one garage, will be offered something within the area so that we can point to it and be very, very clear to people. I also think that we need to pay a lot of attention to the construction period, because there's no doubt about it, this is going to be very disruptive for local residents while the construction takes place. You can't escape from that and, you know, you can't magic it out of nowhere. And given the access along Wensley Road and so on, I think we need to be very, very clear about how that construction is going to be managed. And I'd like to see a, a condition that the local councillors are involved in drawing up the, the construction method statements, both in terms of onsite and the access and in particular deliveries. I know on other sites, even though we've had conditions about the hours they may deliver and so on, you get random drivers turning up from subcontractors who haven't perhaps had the message passed on. So we need to make that watertight so that there are people stopping inappropriate deliveries or inappropriate activities onsite if, if the message hasn't got through. So we really do need to make that clear. And I think the best way to do that is to work with the local councillors on the sort of hours that would be allowed and the routes in and so on. I'm trying to make it up now, obviously, but I think we should condition that as well. So I think, as I say, I will be supporting this tonight. And although there are obviously some downsides, anything is, has downsides, I think people have to look at the balance between quality and quantity. Again, going back to D Park, I remember there was considerable loss of open space, but most of it was unused because it was used for dumping or whatever. And I'm not saying that's the case here necessarily, but even so, what we've got on offer in terms of improved local park for those younger children and for other residents to enjoy, I think will be much of an improvement on what is there now. And the sooner that we can get on and get it out of the way so that people can see what a good development it is, the better. But I know that people aren't going to believe that until they actually see it. So I do understand that we've got a lot of work to do to convince people that the benefits will be for the whole community and not just for the new residents. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Lovelock. I'll now call councillor Josh Williams, please, address the committee.
Thank you very much, Chair. And thank you to the officer for his detailed report and to all the other speakers, there's been, there's been a lot this evening. I'm going to say a few words, but I should also thank councillor Ennis specifically for his words and councillor Lovelock before me. I expect, I respect their experience, both on this committee and on the council. The housing need in, in Reading is acute, there's no doubt about that. Forty-six residential units is forty-six families or residents in a home, and that's no small thing. And I very want, I very much want to support this. No one on this committee is going to be against council homes or affordable homes, and even the petition from residents, which is against the application, makes it clear they're not against affordable housing. We need good quality homes for the future and they need to be safe, sustainable, suitable and affordable. It must be the right homes and in the right places. So, and there's loads to talk about, I'll try and cut it down a little bit, Chair. It's a big application, there's a large set of objections, there is a hundred-plus page report plus an update report. So I'm going to try and concentrate on just a few issues. Overriding everything at the moment is COVID-19. And two things are vital now to the people of Reading, their, their public open space and that we don't crowd too many people into any given area, overpopulating it with too higher density. So the key objections relating to those two things, I think, are the loss of public open space, the loss of place space and leisure facilities onsite, the potential overpopulation and density in the area. And there was, of course, going to be a significant loss of trees, but that's been amended in our update report. So we know that public open space is reduced from over eleven thousand square metres to below four and a half thousand square metres, which would be, I think, drastic and devastating in any area. We lose the mugger and the pump track. I'm not too sure, I don't know of any other pump tracks in Reading, I'd be interested if other councillors do, but I think it would be a real loss. And there was to be a loss of trees, as we said. In fact, after declaring a climate emergency, it was a travesty to try to cut down two-hundred-and-seventy-five trees and only offer to plant hundred-and-eighty-four. The original suggestion within the application from the applicant, that this was in fact a net gain, is given a terse response in the officer's report. The fact that the applicant is in fact the council is concerning, but we have a last-minute reprieve, Chair, that I very much welcome, and it promises to achieve a net gain at least within Minster Ward. Why on earth it took so long to come to that conclusion, I have no idea. Why only the day before the planning committee was that resolved, I don't know. I'll move on. We discussed earlier, and six point three zero in our report says that the, the density, the population density will rise to a hundred and thirty-three dwellings per hectare. And I feel like I've read a lot of documents on this, Chair. And the only justification I've been given for that proposed increase in density is that the site is on a bus route and it will be a rearranged site in some way. I'm disappointed that the particular characteristics of the site have not been drawn out properly to justify that. I do want to mention the homes that are being designed to achieve zero, zero carbon, which I'm pleased to see that aim, and it's been lauded by other councillors and they are quite right. It's laudable and essential. The question is not whether they're designed to achieve that, but whether they will actually achieve that. And so I'd like to note that the two conditions, thirty and thirty-one, go a good way to assuring us of that. But with that aside, Chair, I am worried that this application does exactly what we mustn't do in a post-COVID world, and that is remove open space and crowd people together. So even with the very best intentions to create affordable homes, and councillor Ennis commands a very good argument, it's still going to take some persuasive words from the councillors on this committee to make me think that this development is right in planning terms. But I'm very open to hear those words and listen to what others have to say, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Williams. I'm now call councillor Devine, please address the committee.
Thank you, Chair. And again, I'd like to offer my thanks to the officers for preparing the report, and indeed to the residents of Coly Park for making their voice heard loud and clear during the planning process. This application has much to commend it, and the addition of forty-six new affordable homes, including a large number of three-bed houses, will provide a much-needed increase in affordable housing in Reading. And nobody has a better record of supporting new affordable housing in Reading than myself over the last few years, he says, buttering himself up. Even better, the new houses are proposed to be built to exacting passive house standard with air-source heat pumps, solar panels and triple glazing, et cetera. And I very much commend the design of the new homes. The only drawbacks that I've come across in the whole plan, I'll come on to the, the open space in a minute, but the plan for the new homes was the lack of consideration possibly being given to options to reduce car ownership by including spaces for a car club vehicle or two, or indeed offering support for those giving up cars in favour of bicycles. I think as a-
Councillor Devine, I'll stop you here. Unfortunately, it seems you've gone on to mute. Do you have, could you please unmute yourself and then we'll just-
I have to unmute myself, yes, I slipped, my fingers must have slipped, apologies.
Thank you. That was just recently, you were just talking, I believe, about cars and cycles.
Indeed. I was mentioning that we've not considered giving options to reduce car ownership by including spaces for car club vehicles, or indeed for offering support for those giving up cars in favour of cycles. However, the real key issue for decision tonight is weighing up the provision of new affordable homes and balancing against the loss of sixty percent of public open space in this development site, which with its three high-rise towers already has a high housing density. I personally dislike tall blocks of flats, but the one redeeming feature of the Coly Park high-rise blocks is the amount of public open space around them. This committee has really a good record of preserving public open space in Reading. This application, however, rides roughshod over the wants and needs of the existing population of Coly Park. The barrage of objections has not really been taken into consideration with the weight that it should have been. Nobody would like to see a reduction of sixty percent of public amenity space around their homes, and what we are asking of local residents is, I believe, rather too much to bear. So yes, we have a desperate need for affordable new housing in Reading, but not at the expense of limiting public open space that is so precious to local residents. We have read that the proposal has been amended to take into account various feelings and objections expressed by local residents, but the key opposition to the loss of public open space simply cannot be ignored and has not been addressed. This is not simply a NIMBY approach to new development of any kind, it is a, a real issue for local residents about their loss of open space. I think there could have been a much better balance that would have been, would have garnered more support if the new development was reduced in size and more open space left for local residents to enjoy. So sadly, despite my well-known support for building new truly affordable housing in our town, I find myself objecting to this proposal tonight. I would welcome a compromise solution that required less public open space to be built on, and I would suggest that this is probably the best way forward, and therefore we need to send this proposal back to the drawing board. But I have to say, giving up public space in favour of more concrete and asphalt is not something this council should be in favour of. And I think this whole proposal, despite my support for affordable housing, is, is not acceptable. So I really do think that the, the applicant should go back to the drawing board and come up with a rather reduced plan for less afford, less housing on the site and retaining more of the open space. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any further councillors wish to address the committee at this point? Thank you. I'll first call councillor Page. Please address the committee.
Thank you. And thank you to the local residents and others who have contributed this evening. I suppose the first point one should make is that all planning applications involve a judgment and a weighing in the balance between pros and cons. And local residents have focused on aspects that they think should warrant the overturning or the refusal of this application based on a number of policies in our local plan. And those have been well rehearsed this evening. There are other elements in the local plan policies, of course, which promote good quality, particularly affordable housing. I have to say, I am shocked at councillor Devine's start- I have to say, I am shocked at councillor Devine's stance this evening. The words hypocrisy spring to mind when offered the opportunity to have 100% genuinely affordable housing. He decides it's no longer priority. This, by the way, for ladies and gentlemen, from a councillor who repeats ad nauseam at every single committee, on every single application, there isn't enough affordable housing. And here, offered 100% genuinely affordable housing, it's just a matter that can be dismissed. And I would say whilst recognizing the loss of open space, I would draw his attention and also that of councillor Josh Williams to the table on page 94, which, excuse me, whilst you're turning to it, sets out the loss of open space. And I use that word 'loss' in inverted commas because there is a large amount of public green space that is lost. And overall, there is a reduction. But, and this plays to the point about COVID-19, and the extent of private back gardens that are being included with the houses is very commendable, much larger than what a private developer would offer. You have private green space that's communal to some of the flats. And we also have more paths. And therefore, you need to look at this in a much more nuanced way. Were this new accommodation simply been provided without any space for themselves? I think there would be a very substantial criticism to be made. But I think it is much less so when you look at the design that is put forward. The quality of housing, it's not just numbers. Because as councillor Ennis rightly said, there is a real demand for affordable housing in this town. But it's not the affordable housing that you get off many private developers. We are offering affordable housing here in exceptionally good quality. Not only is the design of these buildings good, but the issue of sustainability and the energy efficiency, the water efficiency, councillor Gittings referred to that in his remarks, is set out in great detail. Paragraph 6.86 refers to the triple glazed windows, the elements of high efficiency insulation, the water efficiency, the photovoltaic panels that will be put wherever possible. So much so that the officer, who is not normally disposed to such language, describes it in paragraph 6.88 as an exemplar scheme for the borough. And so this is not just any housing. This is an exemplar scheme in terms of design and efficiency. And at the same time, will be offered on an affordable basis. But that does require an element of concession around density. And government funding doesn't come without strings. And density is one of those factors. And we wouldn't have secured this funding and we wouldn't have secured the final go ahead for this scheme without there being that sort of density. And so the quality of this scheme, second to none in the borough, will hopefully set a tall, set a very high standard for not only council developments, but also private developments. And councillor Ennis rightly said, we are, as an authority, looking to develop more affordable housing wherever we can. There will always be issues raised. There will always be issues that we have to trade and say, well, is this really offering sufficient benefit to the wider borough and to our housing needs that we should approve it? My answer to that would be yes. And I would also, to pick up a point councillor Emberson made earlier, and this is something for local councillors to pick up on in terms of housing allocation. It's not a planning matter who is allocated to the properties. But I have very strong sympathy with the argument that there should be an element of local priority given to residents who are perhaps overcrowded in the tower blocks. Because one wants to build a sustainable community, not only in environmental terms, but also in human terms. And people that already have links to and an affinity with the area are likely to be better tenants. Not always the case, but that can be an element. So I would hope that within allocations, there will be priority, some priority, given to local people. And that's something obviously for councillors to take forward as well. And the other point that's worth making, this is a scheme that is delivering in the main housing, housing of three and four bedrooms, mainly, I think, three bedrooms, where there's a real demand in the borough. If the council had come forward and said, and we could have done and might have done, say, 40 years ago, we'll stick another one or two tower blocks up. Well, in numbers terms, that might have ticked a number of boxes, but certainly doesn't deliver the housing, the family housing that is needed, family housing that's been provided also with that garden space at a very high quality. So Chair, I do recognise and understand some of the concerns. But as a borough councillor that's been around the longest on this authority and that has seen the council's housing stock reduced from 16,000 to less than 7,000 in that period, thanks mainly to the impact of Right to Buy, I want to see us taking every opportunity to provide high quality housing integrated within the local community and that serves those people in Reading that have been waiting too long for new housing. So Chair, I would support this application. Sorry, I would support this application and would be happy to propose that we agree the recommendations. I just have one minor query, Chair, to Jonathan Markwell. And it plays to a point that was raised apropos the Courage Park and access to it. Money is being spent there. And one of the points that was raised, I think, in earlier questions was about improving access to the site. And I'm wondering whether there's some sort of condition. It's all well and good investing in the park, and I support that. But one clearly wants to make accessibility to it as good as possible and as safe as possible for people. So is there a further condition? Or is there already a condition that might be enhanced that could require further details on improvements to the linkages to that site? That's been finished. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'll give the case officer the opportunity to speak now. But if you'd rather wait for all the councillors to speak, please indicate.
Now I can respond now to councillor Page. So yes, it will be incorporated within the financial contribution towards upgrading play facilities within Courage Park. We're adding a further element within the legal agreement to specify that that should also incorporate access improvements. Obviously, it's taking place outside the red line of the application site. So it needs to be done by the legal agreement rather than by condition. And it will be in the kind of north west of the site, across Wensley Road, straight into the access there is the closest point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Perfect. You preempted my question. I'll now call councillor Sukali to address the committee, followed by councillor Simon Robinson. Councillor Sukali, please make your comments.
Thank you, Chair. This has been a challenging item on the agenda today. And I've listened to all the debate by officers, the discussions brought up in the update pack answering some of the queries raised by residents who've come and so articulately raised their point, also supported by their ward councillors, the Minster councillors. I can't help but feel that it goes beyond a planning application issue now. We almost get the opportunity to weigh up, voting in favour of this item, which would mean we can deliver some affordable housing, in fact fantastically sustainable affordable housing, or we can hope for the perfect application, which is one where we don't worry about the bats, all the micro issues of the loss of green space is dealt with. But I do fear that if we don't think and consider it more carefully about the ramifications for the people of Reading who actually do really do need this affordable housing and it's something that where we have the opportunity to gift them today, I think it would be something that we'd all look back on our decision in shame. So after thinking robustly and really thinking about the nuances and all the various points of views brought to this committee today, I'm in favour of the application. And I would urge my fellow colleagues on this committee to just give it further thought and to think about the ramifications for the town as a whole and our objectives to create a sustainable town where people have housing, economic sustainability. So those are my thoughts on it. And I just want to just use it to be a, just to think about it on a personal level, on a human level, that everyone does deserve somewhere to live, that they can afford to live in. And if we have the opportunity to do that today, maybe something that we should all, we should all try to do. And maybe they should rehash some of the great talks and speech that was given by councillor Ennis, who so articulately put it, let's be human in our decision today. This is planning, but we have an opportunity here. So let's use it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Sukali. Councillor Robinson, please address the committee.
Thank you, Chair. I'm in a strange place on this application in that I certainly welcome the ambitions of the council in terms of the affordable housing. And it's great to see houses with gardens, which is something that has been missing, certainly from a lot of applications that have come forward. My big problem on this is, number one, obviously, the objections. 650 residents is a heck of a lot of people that have issues or concerns about, you know, what is proposed. I'm concerned about the loss of 60% of the public space, the open space. I'm also concerned about the overcrowding in that particular part of the town and wish that there was somewhere else that this development could take place. Because I do feel that, as Josh Williams pointed out, having so many people living in such a small area is not good. And, you know, reducing the open space for them as well is not good. And I think the residents certainly, you know, have voiced their concerns very well in terms of, you know, they're not NIMBYs, they're not in my backyard type people. These are people that obviously live in the locality and can understand the ramifications of what is likely to be built there and the effect it's going to have on their community. I'm also concerned as well as the residents are in terms of the proposed parking. I mean, talking about 0.83 of a space per household, I just did a quick Google search for cars per UK family and it was 1.3 and that was in 2018. And it's gone up since then. So whether we in Reading have lower car ownership, but I would certainly be interested to see what the outcome of the DVLA requisition from the Coly Park Residents Association has got to say in terms of how many people actually currently have cars and whether our thoughts or the methodology we're using should be reviewed in light of that. But for me, this application, whilst I welcome it, it's a great opportunity in terms of affordable housing and everything else. I just don't agree that it is the right place to actually do it. And so therefore, would, will unfortunately be voting against. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Robinson. Would any other councillors wish to address the committee at this point? Thank you. I'm going to make my own comments, but bear with me, please, for a moment because councillor Robinson has identified something relevant, which is the car rental standards, but I'll carry on. Fine. Yes, percentage of households with cars. I know. I'm just looking at the ONS figures about the number of households with cars in urban areas, which are significantly below the figure quoted and we'll come back to. Onto the main points that I have on this. I'd like to commend the applicant on providing 46 socially rented homes, which are genuinely affordable to our community, that reconfigures the public open space. And I recognise there's a loss of public open space to provide socially distant, private public, private space, green space still. There's a 16% reduction of green space as it's reconfigured between public green space and private green space, with the compensator that there are improvements made to the green space, its accessibility, its value with a designated play area, the improvements to the areas of Courage Park as well, which will allow within this COVID environment the distancing required of our populations. Yes, on the car parking, I recognise that it's a relatively centre to town area, which is easily walkable and I often have in the past, as I have friends living within the local area from the centre of town, just over the bridge, which would also reflect that the lower home standards, which I've just seen within an urban area, is 0.95 cars per household. That would be across all urban areas, not just within the area within 20 minutes of what is quite a congested area of Reading. Unfortunately, I've not had the time from the ONS to look at Reading only figures. And I may ask some of our transport colleagues who are on the call what the number is within Reading on the house of car ownership. On the ecology, I'd like to thank the comments which have been provided from the objectors, particularly the 46-page summary, which allowed a strengthening of the conditions on particularly the garages, the ecology, to ensure that there will be both a biodiversity net gain as we achieve the carbon neutral homes that we need in the future, which will provide significant savings, not just in the rent to any residents, but also in their heating bills, which will help this country achieve its carbon neutral status. 50% reduction as required by both the Climate Change Act and Reading's own climate emergency, which she declared, that we can provide some exemplar properties in a relatively town centre location, which will increase the density. But in my mind, a density increase of 20% in a sustainable location, which is accessible by public transport, is advantageous rather than permitting urban sprawl as we have a continuously growing population within Reading. And that both the tenure type of homes, which are three and four bedroom, is vastly superior to most of the one and two bedroom homes that we will see on a great many sites coming forward. And I would, despite the shortcomings, which I see mitigations for, would wish that many more private developers would come forward with something of this scale and ambition. I will then ask Transport if they have any comment on car ownership figures within this area, this distance to the town centre.
Thank you, Chair. In regards to the car ownership, I think what you've looked at is- Thank you, Chair. In regards to the car ownership, I think what you've looked at is more of a a local level. What we do is, we, kind of Reading as a whole, what we do is we look at the exact area, if you like, to make it as local as possible. Loads of different sites would have different characteristics, which will change that car ownership figure. So what the applicant has undertaken is to look at this area of Coley specifically and taking the car ownership level from Coley itself to make sure that it's it responds to those levels instead of providing what may be a wider area car ownership level, which would increase the levels beyond what is actually required. And that is based on, you know, the requirement set out in the National Planning Policy Framework.
Excellent. Thank you. That addresses the comment, I believe. Do any councillors have any further questions of other officers before we move to the vote? Okay. So I'm going to propose that we vote on the recommendations within both the main agenda pack as amended by the update pack with some additional amendments, which are the consultation of board councillors with the construction method statement, the addition of the ecology wording to include an additional bat survey for the placement of any bat boxes, an amendment to the garage condition to make it clear that that any leaseholder who may hold one or more leases will be given a suitable offer for one or more to the appropriate number of garages within the Coley area. Is there any further changes to the recommendations before I ask us to vote on them that councillors would wish to see? Thank you. Councillor Rowland?
Sorry, Chair, you need
Yes.
So, yes, it's Julie Williams here. Just do you also need to add on the amendment to the unilateral undertaking to cover the footpath link?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's what I always ask. Councillor Rowland, please.
That was my point. She was reading my mind. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Then that is the proposal that I wish to lay. Councillor Sukali, can you please second the motion so that it can be made to the vote?
Yes, sure. I second the motion, Chair.
Thank you, just for the sake of the minutes. I'm now going to ask councillors in alphabetical order, should they wish to vote for the proposal with those amendments to the conditions as I've outlined, vote against or wish to abstain. Councillor Devine, your first in alphabetical order, do you wish to vote for?
Against the recommendation.
Excellent. Preempted. Councillor Lovelock?
For the recommendation.
Councillor McKeon?
And for the recommendation.
Councillor Page?
For.
Councillor Robinson?
Regrettably against the recommendation.
Councillor Rowland?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Sukali?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Stanford-Bale?
Against the recommendation.
Councillor Josh Williams?
Thank you, Chair, against.
Thank you. I will now vote, and I will vote for the recommendations as amended. I make that in my reckoning. Four, five, six councillors in for the recommendation and for against. The motion is therefore carried and the application is granted with those amendments. Thank you, councillors, for your time and your consideration of this item. And now I wish to call this meeting to a close. Thank you all.
Thanks, Chair.
Splendid. And good night to you all.
Good night. Thanks, Chair and everyone.